That's a nice head.
Lennon's not coming for us.
Especially Scott, he's always saying inappropriate things. Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council Meeting for Monday, August 26, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Scalloway.
Here.
Lennon. Piana.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We do have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Your Honor, if I may add something to the consent agenda, it's an agreement for Habitat for Humanity to use the city-owned lot at 1456 as the staging area.
All right. You could add that as Consent Agenda 6I. Any other changes to the agenda this evening? Motion would be in order?
I'd move that we approve the agenda with the addition of Consent Agenda Item 6I, as identified by the City Clerk.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Scalloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business is Presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. And the first one will be from our Beautification Committee, the August Beautification Awards. And Peggy, no, you're gonna, you're gonna hand it off to your right-hand gal, huh? She did so well last month, she, you get to do it again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the first time for me that all of the award winners for the August have been nominated by residents of the city, which really makes me feel pretty cool. I don't know if it's, you know, the way it's ever had been before, but it's first for me. So there are two residents that have been nominated and one commercial. The first one is 330 St. Louis. The owner is Kathy Wallace, and she's lived there for 25 years. She's done all the work herself, and if you could see what she's done, it is totally, you need somebody very, very strong to do the kinds of things she's done. Totally renovated a front porch that's made out of cement, and on and on. She has some very established flower gardens all around. She has roses, Bradford pears, magnolias, and she has these enormous window boxes. I know I talked about window boxes last time, but these are even bigger, and they're really spectacular. One garden bed leads into another one, and it's just really, really flowing and beautiful. The landscape is an example of different elements of repetition, texture, and color. So that is 330 St. Louis. The next one is 524 West Breckenridge, and that is owned by a man named John Glace. He has lived there for 62 years, and has lived and gone through Ferndale schools. What really strikes me, as I was walking toward the house, is the easement has been renovated also, and it's really symmetrical, but it's very smart and modern-looking. He has a brick, gray brick pathway going from the easement to the sidewalk, and then from the sidewalk right to his front door. And on each side are boulders that are not enormous, just, you know, workable and beautiful, and a lot of, a lot of golden grasses. He has a flair for gardening, which you can, which is obvious because he has many, many varieties of hydrangeas and shrubs. He has both sun and shade gardens. And the landscape embodies elements of layering and textures, color, subtle colors, and shades of green. The commercial winner is 2351 Hilton. It's between Camborne and Woodward Heights, and it's a universal, excuse me, diversified metal fabricators. The owner is Gary Dulong. This property is a really long piece of property. It's divided into two sections that really flow together, although they are totally different. The first section is quite structured, has a gray brick wall, and on the brick wall there are three separate cement, huge cement containers with ferns and tropicals, a lot of droopy kinds of plants, very colorful. And then the second section is very low-key, but it's curvy. It's a weird combination, but it really looks pretty. And in that is a lot of layering, like burning bushes, hibiscus, hosta, petunias, and those are the elements at his place of color, texture, and repetition. So I think that's all for me. Peggy wants to talk to you about the perennial exchange.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job.
She does a wonderful job.
She did a very nice job, again.
She's a master gardener. She knows so much more about all that than, oh, wow, so much better than I ever did.
You do pretty well, too, Peggy.
But I did organize the perennial exchange. It's our eighth annual, and it's going to be Saturday, September 14, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00, and it's at the Kulik Center, as always. And this is a good time for people to divide their perennials, because lots of them really don't keep growing and doing well, even flowering, unless they're divided. And this is, then you can share them with other people and maybe take some new plants home. So it's a great time for that, and this is, September's a good month for that. And we're also, this year, we're also still going to have the rain barrels from Maxi Containers. That's a really well-known company, and they're only $60. He's been with us, I think, five years now, four or five years, and he's had the same price all along. He's never raised his price. And also, a friend of mine has cleaned out, cleaned out her gardening books, and I have maybe 50 books that I will be bringing, and people will be happy, I'd be happy for people to take from home. She doesn't want to see them, you know, thrown away or anything. She wants to share them. So she asked me if I would give them out to print exchange, and I said, yes, I would, and so everybody could come and take a book home with them also, besides a plant. And this event is rain or shine, and everyone is welcome. You don't have to live in Ferndale to attend, and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Peggy. Our next presentation is Weight Watchers at Work Program Update, and Jenny, are you gonna update us on that program? Tamika's gonna, to co-host this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am presenting our year in, or year-to-date progress on our Weight Watchers at Work Wellness Program. We're really excited to show you what our success has been over the last year. And presenting with me tonight is Mickey Brooks. She is the Records Coordinator over at the Police Department. And really, the idea initially came from Mickey, who came to me last summer and said, hey, what do you think about bringing Weight Watchers to work? And I said, get it going, sweet. So she really has been very instrumental in getting the program going, encouraging participants, not just within the city, but also at the Police Department, to, to work with us on this program. So we, in September of last year, August, actually, of last year, we brought to council a request to reimburse employees for the cost of a session of Weight Watchers. We weren't really sure what our participation was gonna be, and so we were a little nervous that maybe we wouldn't reach the 15-member minimum that you have to have to bring it to work. But we have a coordinator who comes here every Thursday for a half-hour program. Everybody gets weighed in, and in our initial session, we had, I think, 16 or 17 participants to get started. Since then, we have had four sessions. We have actually worked with approximately 30 people. Some people have joined, some people have been members for the entire time. Some people have fallen off, and we've gained new members. But about 30 people since September of last year. In total, our team has lost 945 pounds, .9 pounds, which is equivalent to about seven grown adults. So we've really transformed through this program many, many lives, both for our employees that participate, as well as a lot of family members, and you'll see that in just a bit. Also, through this program, we've had two employees become lifetime members through Weight Watchers, which means that they met the goals that Weight Watcher states, based on your age and your height, that you would be in a healthy weight range. And with that, then they are awarded free membership for life. So what that means is, going forward, there's no other cost to the city for them to continue to participate in the program.
But they still count against your 15?
They do not.
Oh, whoa.
So as we reach that goal, they kind of fall off, and you gotta keep recruiting new people. It's motivation to keep going. So at the end of our program this summer, we tried to gather some data from our employees as it relates to some of the impacts greater than just how much weight have you lost. And some of those things were, we were interested in knowing if people were confidentially willing to share with us, if they've either avoided or stopped taking any medications due to their weight loss. And so these are some of the statistics that we were able to gather. That 63% of participants who did the survey said that they avoided having to take medicine relating to high blood pressure, cholesterol, or diabetes, or eliminated the need to take that, which is amazing. So a lot of people said, my doctor said I was on the fence, and due to my weight loss in this program, I was able to dodge that. So, excuse me. 88% of respondents said their families have also benefited from their participation. So we're cooking different at home, we're serving different meals, we have a different lifestyle, exercising more, involving our families in that as well. And then also, 88% said that they have increased their exercise habits since joining Weight Watchers, which, again, increases the, or decreases the risk for obesity and other conditions. So at this point in time, we have some members in our audience who are participants. If we could ask anyone who is a participant to just stand up, if we could give everyone a round of applause for the great job.
Congratulations, everybody that just stood. We talk about downsizing government. I'm not sure that's what we meant by that. That's awesome. That is great.
Yeah, so just a couple additional things to tie in sort of some cost factors to that. They say the average cost of a heart attack is between $50,000 and $90,000, which is some additional costs immediately following that, which is pretty substantial. We've also kind of put together some average costs of some different conditions and/or medications related to those conditions. High blood pressure, COPD, as it relates to someone who gets oxygen treatment, and then some pain medication that people reported. Also, cholesterol, diabetes, and blood pressure. These are all average costs that we were able to just pile together, some data that we found. So based upon those average costs and the conditions that our employees responded as to either avoiding and/or eliminating medications relating to those, we estimate that we've either saved or avoided about $130,000 in medical costs this year. And we've spent about $9,000 on the program, so we're really confident that while it's very hard to pinpoint exactly what savings looks like, we're definitely avoiding, if nothing else, some big costs by that.
I have to just share my, from myself personally, that Weight Watchers has been a wonderful program for me. I had thought about the program, but the thought of meetings sort of turned me off. And I have to say that the meeting part is the best part of the Weight Watchers program. I love the motivational piece. We couldn't have gotten a better rep from Weight Watchers, and it's just been excellent. I'm sure I speak on behalf of all of our members, that it's been life-changing. And I am one of those individuals who, I was not on a medication, but my doctor had been threatening me. He said, you know, you're at an age with the amount of weight that you're carrying, you could come back within two weeks, a month from now, and I could tell you that your blood pressure's spiking or that you've got diabetes setting in. And he said, you don't want to get, you know, to gain a problem and then try and backpedal, trying to get healthy and trying to remove yourself from those medications. And most of us know that. Most people that are on insulin, it's very hard to come off of the insulin. Even if you're very diligent and healthy and trying to eat right, it's very hard to get off of that medication. I just, real quickly, I'm gonna talk about our results. Actually, not so much our results. Jenny, turn my pages. Oh, okay. Well, I agree with this one totally, and I shared with Jenny, I've been with the Police Department, and a little bit with City Hall, 26 years. And one of the things that I've noticed over the years is that we've got multiple departments within the city, and most of them may as well be in different, you know, areas of the city, you know, on other streets, as far as interaction, people who've worked together for, you know, years and years. And what this program, what I've seen happen is it's drawn, drawn employees together. We've gotten to know each other. We've got, you know, the Police Department, who, you know, police are sort of like teachers, you know, they have their own little club, and they're having a party over there, but it's not really a police party. So, no. Well, in Weight Watchers, we've got police, we've got City Hall, we've got City Yard, we've met family members, and so it really has improved the morale for our city. Increased productivity, I'm sure that it has increased productivity, because when you're happy and you're healthier and you're getting along with your coworkers, then you're going to work harder. Decrease absenteeism, absenteeism, you know, I've never had that problem, but, you know, there again, when you enjoy your work, when you enjoy your environment, when you're happy with yourself, then I can only imagine that there would be a decrease with that. Out of the mouths of success, there again, this comes from the survey that Jenny pulled together, you know, all of us, I believe, most of us participated in that survey, and this is what came right out of the mouths of our members, all of our participants. Joint pain decreased, increased closeness with my husband, we're in this together. One member of the summer, horseback riding, zip lining, climbing a 40-foot rock wall. I haven't gotten there yet. All the things that this individual could not do because they weigh too much. We learned that anything is possible. I'll share this in my community, and I'll say that in the African-American community, there's this huge myth, and I said to some family members of mine the other day, we're going to stop telling that lie. We'll, we look at each other and we say, oh, no, you can't lose that amount of weight. You're an African-American. We're not meant to be beneath a size 14. And in my family, I have, including my mother, who loves me dearly, she's looking at me, and she's going, that's it. You've got to stop right now. You're going to start looking ill. I've learned it's all fluff. It's nothing. It's a lie. You can be healthy, you can be any weight that you desire to be, you can do anything that you want to do. So ignore those family members, participants, if you've got some like mine telling you, oh, it's too much. No, you're getting healthy, and you're going to have a longer life for it. We've got members who've gone down four sizes in clothing. That's, I'm one of those people. I can see my feet again. My outlook on life has vastly improved. I can keep up with my grandchildren. General health and fitness have improved. It's helped having the support at work. What's huge for me, and I hear from our other participants, is that most of us aren't only doing Weight Watchers, as far as watching our diet, but we're exercising. And from a personal perspective, I have never gone into a diet plan with the intent to exercise. I'm going to eat what they tell me to eat, but I don't want to exercise. Well, I started this plan with eating well and exercising, and you really can't do one without the other. So we do have some members, some participants in our program, and if any of them would like to come up and say a few words or, or share their journey with us, this is the time.
Y'all look great, by the way. Congratulations. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Bob Thompson. I joined this program, this was a life-changing for me, because I had one foot in the grave. I have a photo here. The group has seen it when I first started. I mean, I was really bad. I was 279 pounds, and I've had two heart attacks, and I had a stroke. And when I first started, I had a little buddy I used to drag with me. I was on oxygen, and what was it, two weeks or so into the program, three weeks? I went for my physical, and my buddy went away, because my oxygen levels were stable. And I've lost a total of 50 pounds, and, you know, it's just nice wearing regular clothes. My wedding ring, I haven't had it on for five years. So, I mean, it's been a great program. I hope the city keeps it up, because, like I said, it's been a life-changing experience for me, and I thank you.
Congratulations. Anyone else? This is your chance.
Heck, yeah. Come on up, Slim.
Got a prop.
Yeah, you have a prop. I am William Lucas. People just know me as Luke around the city. Been working for 23 years, and for a lot of those years, sorry. Let me stop. I told my wife I wasn't gonna do this. She said, you better not cry.
You're good. You're good.
This has been a journey for me, a great journey, because when I was bigger, I was always smiling, but I wasn't happy with myself, you know. I was always, I've always been that lovable, happy-go-lucky guy, but this has been a great change, lifestyle change, health-wise. I cannot tell you how good I feel about myself personally. That goes a long way, because if you're not happy with yourself, how you gonna love somebody if you don't love yourself? So I've gotten that confidence back. I've gotten that, not a swagger, because I'm humble. God, I'm so humble. But it has been so much of a difference in my life, losing the weight, not being out of breath when you walk up downstairs. And we got, you know, some of the younger guys at the yard, and I'm 45, but guess what? I'm in there now, you know what I'm saying? I can, I'm working out, feeling good. I just wanted to show everybody, you know, the weight I've lost is like night and day. And I said, I gotta bring this to show, to show everybody that this does work.
Yeah.
Hands, I can't even put on anymore. I have to give these suits to, I guess, to the Salvation Army, because I'm not, I wasn't getting taken in. I was like, you know what? I'll get them to somebody else that needs them. I just wanna thank my big boss, April, Lloyd, for letting me come and, you know, spend that 40 minutes, even though we have to be at work. It's just, this is so important. I just wanna thank Jenny, Mickey, our group, because, you know what? Mickey was right. We really have formed a family. You know, when I started working, that's how it was. Now we're getting that back, and it just feels so good to have that support. And I just wanna thank you, council members, for letting us do this, because without this, I probably wouldn't be a, I probably would have had a foot in the grave as well, because I was, you have no idea. But I'm thankful. I just wanna thank everybody for their time, and let's keep this going, please. I implore you. Let's keep this going. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that story, by the way. Thank, appreciate it. Thank you.
So in closing, we have put together a little bit of a slideshow of some of our before-and-after pictures of those who have been willing to share those with us. So I'll just kind of run through some of those. So that's Cecil and Bob.
And I would like Cecil and Bob to stay.
They've been doing this together, and it's been motivating, I think, for all of us to see every week the amazing impact they've had working on this as a team. So, congrats to you guys. John Tholl is one of our detectives in our Police Department, and I think he's creeping up to about 65 pounds, close to 70, that he's lost. And he wears that suit a lot now. This is Mickey. And Cheryl Lynn. Cheryl Lynn was actually the first employee to reach lifetime membership in our program. So we're really proud of that. Our dear April. It gets worse. Here's me, huh? Also, Jenny's having a status that Jenny made lifetime as well.
Jenny did too. Nice. Very good.
Diane Emme, who is here with us. And what I think is awesome-
Great standing up, Diane.
Very nice.
What I think is awesome about this picture is her husband is not a member, but the first thing I said when I saw these two pictures was, wow, he's lost weight too. So proof that our families are benefiting from this as well. Steve LaRoe, Steve used to be a police officer with us. Now he's a parking enforcement officer. He just hit 50 pounds, I believe, as well. And there's Luke. And I think that's it. So all in all, we really, truly thank you for allowing us to participate in this program over the last year, and we look forward to hopefully continuing this program, but also potentially adding to that some different other wellness initiatives that may help our employees in other ways. So we thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you again, everyone, for sharing your stories. Does council have any questions, by the way, of Jenny or?
No, just a comment. I'm just so proud of everybody of being in this program and tackling what is a very hard thing to do, is change your lifestyle and make a habit of it. So congratulations.
Well, Chris, you have to follow that, unfortunately, but I know you're up for it. So Chris Hughes from the DDA for a presentation. The presentation was brought over earlier. Okay. Do you know anything about that? And I can't get to the back room.
Okay. Was it brought on a thumb drive?
Cindy brought it over, and Marty was loading it.
Is it that white thing right there? Oh, that's your thumb drive?
You found it. There it is. All right. All right. So aside from not losing weight, I'm also a technical loser, but let me say, all right. So, good evening. Chris Hughes, Communications and Marketing. I'd like to bring up right away, does this make the slides go? Thank you. Which one? The red arrow? Okay. Pretty high-tech around here, Chris, yeah. This one. Okay. Scott Wright is one of, a major volunteer with the DDA. He's on the Design Committee, and he's going to make the first and most important part of this presentation. So Scott, take it away.
With the build funds, we do as little as you see here, which are just basic new signage, repaint the front of the building, very minimal cost to the DDA and/or the home or the building owners, but dramatic before and after, with just some simple paint and signage. This one here gets a little bit more complex. Originally, you see the back of the building there, with all the painted on the back of the Dollar Castle. Worked with the building owner to strip all the paint down to the natural brick, and then redo the front of the facade to kind of bring back the life of the building. Now, this one here is the new public house going in, and again, Josephine's was the original old, kind of beat-up front facade, and with the new one, is adding all the subway tile, making it very easy to clean, as far as C D, if we ever have that problem. But putting the new windows, all the tile, and all that good stuff on there to really improve it. This one here is probably one of the biggest transformations we've had recently. This one here is on the south side of Ferndale. It's the Mascar Management Company, and when they first approached us, we didn't think we had the funds available to help them out much, and they were a little bit disappointed, thinking they'll wait, and at the last minute, we kind of, with the board, found some funds that they were able to help them along, so they could step the program up. And it's dramatic change in that building. This one here is the building there next to the Ham Place. Can you hear that?
Honey Baked.
This one here, not a huge, huge redo, but this building owner in town has several buildings, and this is just one of the many that he's applied and used funds for. He's also used them on the building which houses Sajis, and painting with a twist, which, if you remember those buildings a couple of years ago, and how bad those two buildings really were. buildings really were, and then he's also, um, done BW3s and Twisty Shamrock over the years. This is where our newest project that we have in the works, which will be coming, uh, any day now, and this is the Body Shop Ferndale Collision on Buster, as well as the old VFW, which will now be a commercial kitchen, and, uh, it's part of Dino's empire. And, uh, I think that's it, other than, Chris, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Explain the rest of it.
Thanks, Scott.
I should've given Scott a better introduction. These different building facades and changes that you see, um, come about as, as different businesses come to us, and they're talking about what they wanna do with their buildings, they usually meet with the design committee, which Scott sits on, um, to talk about how they might improve their buildings, restore them historically, or at least, uh, improve how they look, generally speaking, and improving one building, as you know, is, has a snowball effect, it's like getting one person at Weight Watchers to lose fifty pounds, you can get many more to join in on that. So, um, we're very happy with the different changes, and I think everybody is, with the changes that have taken place, the reinvestment of the dollars through the build program, through these different property owners to make their properties even better, and improve the overall downtown. And so, now that I got that taken care of, we gotta get on to the events. Actually, Wednesday, we have an, uh, an event that's not up there, it's our Fernnet meeting, we're gonna meet at Michigal Pizza at nine AM, we're gonna be talking about the downtown Ferndale brand, and how businesses can use that to improve their business. We also have up and coming, um, Ferndale Street Eats Food Truck Rally, that's on September seventh, uh, Building a Better Corridor for Ferndale Businesses on September twelfth, that is at the Emery, Ms. Piano, I think you know?
The, which one?
Dino's.
Dino's, sorry, yes, sorry. DIY and Funky Ferndale Art Fair, or September thirteenth through the fifteenth, Thursday is Get Real Outdoor Movies, that's September nineteenth. We are very excited to be announcing and promoting Downtown Ferndale Restaurant Week, and that's October seventh through the thirteenth, and what's really exciting about this is that we are going to also have the art part, and, um, we are going to have, uh, a contest for artists, they will each, they'll make submissions, and we'll be paired up with a restaurant, and have a public voting on that, and it's a very exciting, um, effort, kind of a small, little mini art prize, but it's the art part of Restaurant Week, uh, and third Thursday, Fido Does Ferndale on October seventeenth. I wanna remind everybody also to go to downtownferndale.com, uh, excuse me, downtown Ferndale on Facebook, to vote for their favorite Art Town Sculpture. We have eleven sculptures out there, and they need your vote, if it's your favorite, go out there and vote, and I think, oh, one more thing.
How long do they have to vote?
It'll end, uh, art fair weekend, so, actually, it'll end that third Thursday, after it, which I can't remember that date right now, because I do get nervous. We also wanna bring you up to date on the West Nine Mile Streetscape Project, which is just, it's, if you haven't been down there, I know you, all of council has, and anybody involved in the nuts and bolts of it, but just, everybody ought to see how great this is looking. There's wonderfully wide sidewalks, you can see the things taking shape, it's kinda like you let your imagination roll, um, you can see how wide the sidewalks are, are from this, uh, photo right here, there's sparkly black concrete, which is, just gives a little pop right when you need it, we've got some beautiful buttercup yellow benches, and bike loops, and trash receptacles to go in, unfortunately, none of it'll go in until October first or after that, because MDOT has to, we have to follow their rules, and we can't put in landscaping until then, but then all the pretty stuff will all come together really quickly after that, but everything is on schedule, the crews have been working very hard, Lloyd's been the taskmaster, and, uh, it's looking good out there, there's, they've done a whole lot of work, and anything else you wanna know, all the details, all the time, at downtownferndale.com. Thank you, and thanks for your help, Joe.
Hey, Chris, what's the movie in September? The movie in September?
For the real life?
That's gonna be decided tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll be first to know, I'll call you.
Thank you, Chris, lots, lots going on in downtown Ferndale. Alright, the, uh, next order of business would be called audience, uh, called audience, as you may know, is your opportunity, those of you who are here, to speak for three minutes now, um, for up to thirty minutes, more time if needed at the end of the meeting. Uh, for anything that's not on the agenda, because I'll give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda, so, if you wanna come up and speak during called audience, just give us your name and your address, and tell us what's on your mind. Who's this? Somebody left that behind, perhaps. Okay, you could just give, thank, thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Paul Kish, seven oh seven West Hazelhurst. Dan Martin, thank you for saying hi.
Sure.
And Mr. Chris, I like that shirt.
His daughter bought it for him.
I simply want to finish reading the letter that I was not able to finish July the eighth, I think it was.
Alright.
And it's not gonna mean a whole lot, except for, for the end of it, really. Later on, that afternoon, Jane Marie had called to say she had received a meter read, she also said that she wanted to move the three additional units of water to the following water bill versus putting it on the current one. I believe that this was very fair on her part. I told her, "Thank you." Jane also tried to go back and recalculate the bill closer to the service period, ended up she couldn't. I thanked her for trying, this was fair of her. After explaining to Jane Marie what had happened with Carol, being rude, uncooperative, threatening, Jane replied, "I will deduct twenty dollars from your bill, no one should have to deal with rudeness." This was fair of her. I thanked her. Jane Marie handled this situation with professionalism, fairness, understanding, integrity. I have the utmost respect for her and how she handled this issue. I needed you to be aware of that. For this other official, I have no respect. Thank you for your time, Paul Kish. And I thank you again for your response and your apologies. That's good, a good enough for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kish.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, my name's Craig Covey, two seven six West Breckenridge. I'm actually here tonight representing the Water Resource Commissioner's Office up in Oakland County. A couple of weeks ago, some folks raised some questions about stormwater and some of the issues on the east side. By my coincidence, uh, as part of my job now with the Water Resource Commissioner's Office, I'm working on organizing a Stormwater Summit for the region. This'll be the first time that, uh, Oakland County has put on such a conference. Uh, it is on October the fourth, which is a Friday, it's called the 2013 Regional Stormwater Summit, it's gonna be held at Lawrence Tech University, and we're expecting up to three hundred regional and local, uh, leaders. Folks that might be interested in attending this conference would include elected officials and staff of cities, townships, counties, and other elected officials, industry providers and stakeholders, environmental groups, also students, and other interested public. So, some of the workshops and programs we're gonna be featuring include, uh, the new EPA regulations that are coming down from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency that are gonna be dealing with stormwater, also, uh, new regulations from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, green infrastructure, there's a lot of neat stuff now that's happening, uh, in ways to prevent stormwater from, from joining and, and being, uh, it's, it's much more expensive when you have to, uh, have it go through the wastewater system. So, green infrastructure programs, uh, and also programs on funding and methodology, so, uh, I'd like to give a copy of this to the staff, and if anyone's interested in attending, um, the last program of the day is gonna be a speaker on climate change and what to expect here in southeast Michigan. We're gonna open that to the public free of charge, uh, and the entire conference itself is only twenty dollars per person. I managed to get complete sponsorship from organizations and companies, and that twenty dollars includes breakfast and lunch. So, uh, Lloyd said he might be interested, if any of y'all are interested, uh, I will get information to Sherilyn, and again, it's Friday, October fourth, and thank you kindly.
Thank you. Jeannie Davis, good evening.
Hi, Jeannie Davis, President of the Ferndale Senior Group. I'm just reminding everybody that the Ferndale, um, Senior Candidate Meet and Greet is this Wednesday, uh, August twenty-eighth, it's at eleven AM at the Culet Community Center, the cost is free, you don't have to be, um, a senior to come to it, and the candidates are running for office this year for the mayor, and the council seats will be there, and they'll talk a little bit about why they would make a good mayor, councilperson, and then there'll be a brief question and answer session. We have Mayor Culture coming, and running against Mayor Culture is Craig Covey and Sherry Wells, and, um, the other candidate will not be making it. We also have, um, Melanie Piano will be coming, and Greg Pollack, so, please come, thank you.
See you Wednesday. Good evening.
Good evening, Carl Rosenblatt, I've been a member here for forty-five years, living in Ferndale, and, uh, I'm on Camborn, and there's a new project going up there, and it's wonderful about all the different things that we're doing to improve Ferndale, to improve the beauty. However, um, on Camborn, uh, I had the unfortunate, um, circumstances of looking at very ugly buildings from the time Jim Ashmore was there, turning that into a brown area, then they demolished it and left a field of debris there that I had to watch for a long time after that, even through the crews, and now they're putting up a nice building, and I'm actually looking forward to that, except for one thing. They've decided to carry out their tradition by, uh, putting a garbage dump right across the street from us. I'm representing seven other people here, uh, Dominic, uh, Tony, Mary, Sandy, and Peggy, and two others, uh, we're the first five houses that we're gonna have to look on this. As I understand, uh, the code says that there has to be a wall between one of the houses and the parking lot, which is being erected as we speak, however, there's been no provision that is sealing the parking, uh, lot from Camborn Street, which means that we're gonna have to be looking at all the debris, uh, headlights, uh, during the nighttime flashing into houses, and, uh, nothing has been, uh, in the plans, I talked to three of the people that were on site, and they said there's nothing for that, and they gave an excuse that they want the trash compactor right next to, uh, Camborn Street, uh, because they said that there's some sort of a thing with their truck, it's more convenient. I suggested, and I would like to suggest to the council, that they'd be forced to move this further back between Lewiston and Camborn to where the current small alley is, there's a transformer right there, they shouldn't have any problem, uh, getting power to this compactor, and, um, I've also talked with three other people about a large rat problem that has suddenly grown, and is gonna be continuing to be a problem with the dumpster being right there. I don't know if, uh, this area is being zoned for, uh, any kind of food, but then again, even if it's not, people are gonna eat lunch, they're gonna put their food in there, and there's just going to be debris swirling all around. Personally, I would like to have a berm, I think that would be, you know, more aesthetically pleasing, but I would just be grateful if there was some sort of a wall, and move the trash compactor to where it's not gonna be making noise, it's not gonna be a big influence on the rest of the community that, that we've all, you know, been trying to improve. And, uh, where, where it's sitting, uh, I, I believe is intolerable, and I would like to try to do anything to move it. Uh, as I understand, they may even have anticipated this move and started pouring concrete for the footing for it, but I can't be certain. But, uh, I am distressed that, uh, many of us have not been included in this planning, being that we are right there, literally a stone's throw away, and nobody has even, uh, you know, sought fit to at, at least give us a heads up. We, we pretty much had to, you know, find out through other, uh, avenues, so, I would encourage you, and, uh, if it, if it happens and you can move the dumpster, I would be well pleased, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenblatt, and we'll make sure your comments get to our Development Director.
I'll make sure Derek's aware.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council this evening? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agendas are items that we consider routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is removed from the consent agenda, um, but first, let me read the consent agenda. Uh, item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August twelfth, twenty thirteen. Uh, item B, adoption of a resolution authorizing Councilmember Martin to attend the Michigan Municipal League's 2013 Convention on September seventeenth to the twentieth. C, approval of the expenditure of three thousand dollars for Ferndale Youth Assistance to be charged to the Drug Forfeiture Fund. D, approval to allocate funding necessary up to ten thousand dollars for the Weight Watchers at Work Wellness Program for the period of August twenty-nine, twenty thirteen through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. E, approval of the one-year service and maintenance agreement with KP Electronics, Inc., and to charge the expense of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to the Water and Sewer Fund. F, approval of the AccuMed invoice for four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-three cents, which includes four thousand forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents for AccuMed Web Annual Support, two hundred and fifty dollars for the annual fax mo- module, and forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents monthly cost per page to be charged to contract services. G, approval of the DH Wireless Solutions modem and antenna bid of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents to be charged to the Phone Communications Fund. Item H, approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee, and now, the item that our clerk walked on, which is item I, uh, which is the request to, by Habitat for Humanity, to use fourteen fifty-six Browning to set up a tent in support of their rehabilitation walk. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak, uh, to the consent agenda? And I, I think there may, because, uh, uh, one of the items is the, that I mentioned is the three thousand dollars for the Ferndale Youth Assistance, and I would invite, uh, representative of the youth assistance to come up and speak to that if you were, if you would so choose.
Hello again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again Craig Covey, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors of Ferndale Youth Assistance. Ferndale Youth Assistance, like all the youth assistance organizations in the county, and it has become a national model, relies on support and, and works with the cities, the schools, and the courts, and of course, our, our job is to work with and for our youth. Um, we work with youth at risk, we can, we're, actually, we work with all youth, uh, a host of different kinds of programs, including camp, various kinds of camp, uh, prevention education, drug and alcohol prevention programs, counseling interventions, and other programs for youth at risk, again, working with the schools, the cities, the county, the police department, the courts, teachers, and parents. And so, just very briefly, I won't take much of your time, but money that goes to this kind of programming is actually, like some of the other things we talked about today, is prevention. The average cost for one day at a stay of a juvenile facility is four hundred and thirteen dollars. One day for a, a young offender to spend at Children's Village is a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. A day of probation, uh, is twenty dollars, um, but a youth getting services from a youth assistance caseworker costs only two dollars. So, funds that go, and most of our funds comes from, uh, from fundraising, as you all know, the Ferndale Blues Festival, and the Bowl-a-thon that Jerry Oli puts on, um, but we appreciate the support we get from Pleasant Ridge, and this year, from the City of Ferndale, um, and, uh, also from the court and the county.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate it, and, uh, I appreciate it, Mayor, and, and council members, but in particular, Councilman Martin, I think you had a role in helping facilitate this, and we also appreciate, appreciate the police department, uh, sort of encouraging the use from the, I think, the Drug Enforcement Fund, so, thank you kindly, if there's anything I need to sign, I will, but, uh, thank you.
Anyone else from the, um, audience that would like to address the consent agenda? A motion would be in order? Motion would be in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any discussion by council on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration to designate official City of Ferndale Voting Representative and Alternate at the annual MML meeting.
I believe I have served the city in this capacity the last couple of years, and I would love to continue doing that if council would like me to serve in that capacity.
I think that would be a good thing.
I'm fine with it. Works for me. All right, then a motion would be in order.
Can I ask a question? Do we have to designate, it says voting and an alternate? Do we need to do both?
An alternate is possible, yes.
Okay. Well, I'll be there. I mean, I can be the alternate.
I'll be the alternate.
I would move that we appoint Councilmember Piana as the City of Ferndale's official representative and appoint Councilmember Martin as the alternate representative to the Michigan Municipal League's 2013 convention.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now moving on to item B, consideration of an engagement letter with Plant Moran for the services of Finance Director and Treasurer. City Manager, do you want to introduce it?
I do. As you know, our Finance Director retired after almost 25 years with the city. She served, she had a lot of hats. She was Finance Director, Treasurer, Assistant City Manager, things of that nature, and all of the other things. And as we tried to figure out how to replace that knowledge, it's a lot of years, as well as finance and government now has changed so dramatically with GASB standards, which is the governmental accounting standard board, that finding, I'm finding that our peers even are having a hard time finding experienced Finance Directors who have that background and are able to do that. Looks like over the course of the last few years, things have been trending in that capacity where some accounting firms have created different divisions, which includes serving as CFO for different municipalities and nonprofits. Plant Moran has been doing this for over 15 years. They have currently 15, I think 16 different cities that they are some, in either some capacity, the CFO or a Finance Manager. And in particular, some of our neighbors. In fact, Hazel Park and Pleasant Ridge are both using Plant Moran in this capacity and have offered nothing but positive experiences with that. The one, a couple of the reasons why I think that this might be something that I'm, actually I am recommending to City Council is that what I like about using Plant Moran in this capacity is not only are you, we get somebody who can come in, who absolutely without a doubt knows GASB standards and fund accounting, but they will bring back to the table as well as best practices from other communities. Some of these communities are, that they work with are already in emergency management, which means that we're going to have the foresight of what not to do to make sure that we are prepared for our financial challenges. Their learning curve in general on fund accounting is going to be much lower, as well as not only are you going to get the person that could be standing right here, which I'll introduce in just a second, is that you're going to get the expertise of the entire organization itself. So if we have a tax issue, they can go to their tax division, things of that nature. So the background that they can provide is incredible and is comparable into hiring that position off the street. So when you look at benefits and wages of a, of an experienced Finance Manager, you're looking anywhere between 130 and 135 per year. And as you, as you can see here, Plant Moran's model is asking for, it would be for $120,000, but it's also good through June of '16. So again, in comparison of hiring somebody off the streets, the costs are comparable and the experience and the knowledge and the different ways of using Plant Moran, I think is going to be beneficial, especially as we navigate our financial challenges that we're going to see over the next couple of years as well. So with that, I am recommending that we move forward with an engagement with Plant Moran. I did seek out some other options as well, but this still continues to be the one that I'm recommending. And I do have Brian Callimer here from Plant Moran, too, to answer any questions. But I didn't know if council had any specific questions to why I'm choosing this direction or comments or concerns as relates to that.
Are there questions of clarification? Otherwise, we'll need a motion to have the discussion on the item.
Just to clarify, this contract is for the, an entire year through June of 2014?
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
And can go through '16?
Yes, okay.
Fixed price. And then if we do have, it's nice is if we find this is not working for us, we just need to give Plant Moran 30-day notice and we can just continue.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Plant Moran for the services of Finance Director Treasurer for $10,000 per month or $120,000 per year through June 30, 2014, with an option for extension through June 30, 2016, and to be charged to the appropriate account.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion by Piana and a support by Galloway. Now, discussion, questions on this side. Dan, Chris?
Your Honor, briefly, I did provide communication dated August 22 of this year. I identified certain issues with respect to the proposal letter that I thought needed to be resolved. I assume most council has reviewed my points. I know in speaking about my concerns with City Manager, she suggested that if council wanted, it might fashion its motion or consider approval of the proposal contingent on approval of both as to form, legal form, by myself and approval of the City Manager to allow for the matter to go forward while hopefully resolving those few language issues associated with the draft.
April, did you see anything in that, in Dan's letter that was problematic in terms of?
We'll be able to figure it out. We just couldn't get him the changes in time for tonight.
And Brian, I guess I should ask you the same thing. Have you seen, has?
His counterpart Carl Johnson has. We're working through that right now.
All right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
My question, my questions are about the audit. Can you remind us, we're on a one-year audit contract with our current financial auditor, right? So Plant Moran would be prohibited from trying to bid on auditing their own work?
Can't audit.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear about that.
Yep, yep. Thank you. And we would remain, are now with Abraham Gaffney, and if we were to go out for bid for audit services, again, Plant Moran could not, they could not participate.
Well, I guess I would just make the comment, your point is well taken, that the complexity of disposition has changed over the years. And I know that a number of governmental units, including Oakland County, where I worked for a while, does a number of, has a number of relationships with Plant Moran. And Plant Moran is, you know, kind of considered the, I think, the gold standard around here in terms of the professionalism and the services that you offer. And I know I did have an opportunity to talk to our friends in Hazel Park who utilize these services as well, and they're very well pleased. And I mean, I look forward to your engagement in our city.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm sure we can get the minor details of the language worked out in the engagement letter. And we're very excited about the prospect of working with you on a daily basis.
And this is a much more fun community than any of the other ones.
Well, take a look at the list. There are a lot of non-fun things happening.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, actually. I was a little surprised when this came through for the year that it was. For something that's new for us, and I have no issues with Plant Moran coming in and doing this, but even with the 30-day out clause to make a commitment for a year with an automatic renewal up to, up to 2016, there's no value in trying this or piloting this for a shorter amount of time than a whole year before we?
We can't anytime. We have a 30-day notice. So you, by the time they, you know, you would almost need a whole cycle to understand how they worked. Of course, if in the meantime, we're just finding the communications aren't there or there's a huge gap, we'll have to go out, we'll have to figure something else out. But at any point, we just need 30 days' notice to get out of the agreement. We're not, we're not stuck in it for the year. So we can, we can revisit this then with internally, within a quarter or six months, and see how it's going and go from there. We can absolutely internally call it that and see how it's going.
Okay.
I suspect the City Manager will be providing us update on how the services are being performed on, you know, after six months. So I'm okay with having the longer-term clause in there, knowing that you'll provide council ongoing updates.
But I mean, the benefit of this proposal is that we lock in the price and don't have it fluctuate. So if we only did it for six months or something less, the price might, market conditions might change perhaps. So is our motion on the table sufficient to address this? So we need to add some language in our motion to suggest that while we want to move forward with the relationship, we need to finalize this language regarding assignment of risk and how we're going to handle that.
We do, but I'm not sure Councilman Martin has finished with.
Well, let's, we can get that, we can get, I'm not, but we can get that issue out of the way. I'll offer an amendment to the motion contingent on approval as to form by the City Attorney and the City Manager. And I think that addresses the City Attorney's concern.
All right.
So that's, I offered an amendment. So some needs to support.
Oh.
Did you get it?
I did.
So yeah, there's an amendment, amendment by Martin and supported by Galloway. So discussion on the amendment. Madam Clerk, call the role on the amendment, please.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Now back on the main motion.
Okay, so the equivalent cost of the contract itself, though, is less than what we would experience having a full-time finance person in place. So we've got cost savings there. And the advantage for the longer period of time is simply to lock in that price for the time, for a longer time period?
Yes, but we at any time have a 30-day clause.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. So they, I mean, they have to do a lot of ramp-up to bring that to, that's a, they're bringing on staff for quite a significant portion of their time. So obviously, the longer we can include them in that contract, the better off we are.
Okay. I'll just say that here's my concern, and I'll support this, because I trust the monitoring and our need to monitor it. It's an awfully long-term contract not to go out to bid for, especially when we look at the costs. I have full faith in Plant Moran as an organization. Please don't get me wrong. It's just about due diligence and what's out there. And yeah, I would highly encourage us to continue to monitor this, because even 30 days is a long time to get out of something if we find it doesn't work for us. So.
Okay, sure.
Other comments or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana? This is on the main motion as amended.
All right, say that again?
The main motion as amended.
What, I'm sorry. I wouldn't.
So we are now voting on the main?
I didn't hear you, I thought you said Galloway.
Oh.
No, I thought you said Galloway, which is why I was confused. I'm like, why are you calling, why are you looking at me? Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The motion as amended is approved. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next item of business would be call to council. I see the police chief in the back. Anything for the good of the community this evening, chief?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, Brian, representing our fire department, anything this evening?
Fire, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Well, you know what, since, since you're here, we did have a house fire this week, right? Maybe just a brief update on, I'm not sure you even know the cause yet, but maybe just a brief update on the house fire that we had this week.
Fortunately, the family was away at the time of the fire. I guess the mom and baby were scheduled to sleep in that morning. Thank God they didn't. It was in the baby's room, which was a small, very small room, actually almost the size of a closet. And they put clothing on shelving, the clothes were too close to an incandescent light bulb and ignited. So the guys got there very quickly, neighbor called the fire in, and they made a great stop on it. So it was minimal damage to the house, and they should be back in shortly.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Jenny, anything else from HR this evening? All right. Joe, anything from the CIO office this evening?
From the City Manager's office, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to be presenting, real briefly, a.
Oh, not, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's right. Because you're, yes, thank you. Okay, yes.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. We will be presenting a brief report of the first 120 days of the Park Plus system. It has now been in operation since early April. So to do so, we're going to look at three main focus areas for improvements that the system has shown. The first one, we'll concentrate on how we've improved operationally. The first point we'd like to hit up on is the flexibility of the payment platform. Since we've installed this, you can now, customers can now pay with cash, coin, and credit. We have continued to expand our Park mobile use, and we've also expanded the new program where people can renew via text message. That's a part of the program offered by the software. We can, though we have yet to, also provide options for value cards, where people could preload payments onto a card. This would help them avoid having to carry change in the future if they were to use this. And we can also have the ability to program different rates. So it does give us a little bit more flexibility and diversity in how we can program our collection system. Secondly, from an operational standpoint, it's given us the ability to capture just-in-time management principles. So what I mean by this is from an accounting perspective, we are now sent alerts, so we can collect on demand. So if there's, if there's need to remove something, some full coin box, we can collect it on demand, so that way it doesn't sit there for a, for a time period, being unable to be used. And that will be the same thing for maintenance, too. We are enabled to have the ability to be alerted for maintenance alerts now. So whereas the industry referred to them as dumb meters, typically would have just sat there broken until we had stumbled upon for collections or were notified by a patron. Now we can be proactive about that responsiveness. Also, the cost of ownership has been lowered. The single-spaced meters were proven to be, the age was becoming a problem, replacement parts were less available. The base stations are proven to be more reliable. They are built for weather resistance and durability from a long-term perspective. And the system is being expanded through other municipalities, so parts and replacement will be available as we continue to move on. Just a synopsis of some customer service solutions. We have added 13 more machines in the beginning of implementation phase. These machines were placed in locations that were determined by the data of the actual traffic that we were seeing. As noticed in the image, we, the DPW crafted a nice solution for LED lighting.
We're trying to get patents, so we can make some money off of it.
It was a very, very innovative and inexpensive solution to provide lighting for key strips, for the keypad, rather. On a bigger scale, the lighting solutions for the actual key assist stations themselves, which will be solar-powered as well, will be, are expected to be delivered at some point in September, and I believe implemented in the coming weeks. We've also improved the speed and connectivity of the system. We moved over from AT&amp;T to Verizon. This has really substantially improved the connectivity standards and the uptime of the modems. We're able to, to process payments a lot quicker now. We've reduced screen prompts also as well. So really, you know, we listened to the customer feedback of kind of a cumbersome process in the beginning. We started out with a lot of screen prompts. We reduced as needed, so.
Joe, that's one of the most significant things I've noticed recently, is just how much quicker they, they operate and how fewer steps there are to take. So that's been a, that's been a noticeable improvement.
Anybody operating a machine, and they used it before, should have noticed the difference. I know immediately, when I, I try to use them once a week just to make sure everything, you know, we all try to do that. And I, right away, I was able to absolutely tell the difference. So that's been significant.
And those new high-speed modems were installed in late July, so if you used the system in the past month, that's really when you would have realized the difference in speed. This one is a really big improvement. This is parking security improvements, and I hope you'll note at the top of the screen. During 2010, 2011, we had several notable thefts of the meters. Our police department did end up having to install video surveillance. And as you can see, the entire Whittington Lot was shown to be emptied in less than five minutes. Our police department were able to apprehend the suspects, who were also responsible for similar thefts in Royal Oak and a few other neighborhood, neighboring communities. And again, in 2012, the pad. And again, in 2012, the pattern changed a little bit, and rather than doing vast sweeps of lots, they thought they would go, take a more incremental approach, and they would do sections of lots or sections of street. And again, our surveillance was by our police department, enabled us to make the apprehensions in December of 2012, but the problem was very much shown to be that we had a susceptible system that we couldn't really protect. So since the installation of the pay stations, we have had zero instances of any meter theft from the pay stations. There's a complex redundancy in the key system, so it would be very difficult for anyone to actually get to the payments. As well as an alarm system, there's an alarm system that's incredibly loud, in case you accidentally set that off, like me the other week.
I haven't turned that one.
That will make it very difficult for someone to walk away unnoticed. And the alarm systems do automatically send messages to anyone considered an admin of the system, so everyone will be alerted right away as soon as that trip is set. From a general operational report, the implementation costs, the final costs for this new system were $550,000.
And just to note on that, totally came from the parking fund, not from?
Totally, yes, all costs totally.
Not from the general fund?
Were derived just from the auto parking fund, just to stand by user fees.
Yes.
The total number of transactions to date on just the pay stations, and again, we never could have had this before, would be 342,893 transactions. The most significant aspect of that is the number of credit card transactions that never were able to be captured prior to this system. You'll note that 33% of our transactions are credit card-based. That's 100,000 people that had an opportunity to pay with this new revenue stream that was never available before the system.
And that's actually steadily increasing. Actually, we started off really low at like 10% or 15%, and it's been, every month, it's been increasing to, to the point where, I think there's a, is there a number that they've thrown out about where the, is it 50% or 65%?
Yeah, they, most cities who've had the system within 18 months see a transition to 75% credit card, 25% cash and coin. It's very significant, and our trends indicate that we are trending that way. We've gone up about 20% since April, May. We were at about 10% to 15%, now we're at 30%. That's a good leap in four to five months. The total revenues collected from the system were 293, almost $300,000. So we've almost recouped the implementation costs in the four-month period. That does, I'm sorry, between February 2013, it's current. Park mobility, ParkMobile is up. Our revenue shot up to 44%, shot up 44%, which is a significant increase, and our representative did make us where the Ferndale is now considered a ParkMobile top performer since the implementation of the system. So to focus on continuous improvement, some of the short-term next steps, as mentioned earlier, we are going to continue improving the lighting situation of all the payment kiosks for safety concerns, especially as we go into these fall months and winter months. Our Department of Public Works will be installing, again, their innovative design for park here signs that will be hovering over our stations. We are going to continue to analyze the traffic, and we're going to relocate underutilized existing machines to high-demand areas, again, based on the data that the machines are able to provide us. This will also be based on some traffic counts that we've been conducting as well. And we're also looking to integrate a select amount of 30-minute parking-only spaces to meet the needs of our downtown retail businesses. We have heard steadily from some retail businesses that have requested the consideration of 30-minute parking only, so we have looked into that today. We are currently working with some consultants on quantity and what the best locations for those spaces would be.
And that, too, just to know, we, we needed to get through the summer to really start, I mean, we've been making the tweaks that we could, but to start moving machines and things of that nature, you really wanted to see the trend that was going through the summer, and really ending with the Dream Cruise, which is one of the larger events. I mean, even DIY that's coming is comparable to Dream Cruise, so we felt that we could take a look at what the pattern was showing for the summer and where the traffic was. We didn't want to just keep moving machines, like, okay, this, you know, thinking this week, this one's heavier traffic than this one. So what we were able to do is work with Republic Parking to really take a look at the entire summer in totality. They've had people here during the day, during the night, until 2:00 AM, to be able to take a look at where is the traffic, the flow going, and what machines can we take a look at to tweak a little bit more to continue our line management, which is, it's going, I mean, for the most part, going fairly, fairly well as it relates to that. We have just a few tweaks to make on that, but we wanted to get through the summer on that one.
Next, we have some long-term investment improvements that we'll be focusing on. Again, one of the benefits of this system is it really helps us define our financial position in terms of the auto parking fund. And again, this has for long-term investment implications, financial investment implications. So with the system, we've improved our stability of our cash flow. Again, you have the security of the cash flow improvements. You've multiplied your revenue streams as an option, and again, its ability to help define rates as far as areas moving forward would be a benefit as far as stability. The ability to tap into the data helps us to predict our ability to service debt moving forward. And again, it's, the efficiencies that come with the technology synergy helps us leverage improved operating margin. From a sustainability standpoint, we're going to be continuing to advocate solar powers, which helps us improve our energy efficiency. Again, as referenced before, we will see less maintenance and less replacement as we do with the current Duncan mechanical meters. And just, you can, you can just see from an infrastructure standpoint, 942 meter heads have resulted in 33 pay stations, so that's a reduction, a reduction in meter heads, which you could also find that as a beautification request for the streets, a beautification improvement for the streets. And again, this, revenues, we get flexibility to increase parking capacity. You can't increase parking capacity without the stability and the expansion of our ability to stabilize the revenue streams.
I may talk a little bit more on that as well. I think it's important to note that this is going back to the original reason why these multi-space meters came in play. We were really capped at what we could do with our innovation and our ability to look at our parking options with the original Duncan meters. You couldn't change rates, even if you wanted to, and we couldn't be flexible as it relates to, first of all, we had the security issues, we had that, just the flexibility of changing rates depending on, you know, if we wanted to do flat rates or things of that nature. Again, we're working through that process. But the bottom line is that without adjusting the meters, we were losing money through security issues. We were chasing good after bad. Those meters were slowly dying, and that this really allows, as you can see, 33% are now using credit cards, just multiple ways for people to pay. So it's important to keep remembering why it is that we moved in this direction, is that even though it might not seem it to some people, that really, customer service-wise, we're providing a much larger range of ways for people to pay for parking, and it just allows us the flexibility that we need to, as we look at our options for expanding parking, that we wouldn't be able to even have any options if we were to keep the meters that we had. So that was, again, an important part of why going to a multi-space metering system was so important.
Thank you.
And again, for the, to address the future parking demand, right now, we are reviewing our parking rates with Republic Parking. They're also helping us to review updated traffic counts as recently as the last, the last month. We're looking at the flow to address the congestion that we see on the weekends. And again, we're looking at options still to increase parking capacity, and that could have many faces. I'm sure you have to be defined.
Yeah, I mean, I think at that point, you know, we have, one of the things that we have Republic Parking helping us with is taking all the data that we've had. We did a parking study, there was a parking study done in 2006, and it was updated again in 2009. And the economic outlook in 2006, and in 2009, and in 2013, all three are very different. So we're taking a look at the current, the reports that we have on hand, but then also they're taking a look at what they're seeing, what they're touching. Again, they're here at 10:00 in the morning, they're here at 2:00 in the morning, to really take a look at those traffic flows and making sure that our count and really where our busy time is and what we can do to, to really take a look at that. And again, it's not just, is there enough room for another parking spot? It's how we, how cars come in and how long they can be in a spot. It's all of that has to be re-looked at, and we're looking at that right now. And then with that, too, is taking a look at what are our options? If it is, let's say, for instance, if it is a deck, how much is that going to cost us? What can the system, as it stands now, what capacity can we have for debt payments and things of that nature? So over the course of the next two months, that's their focus, is to bring us all of the options that we have, that they see using the parking studies we have with new information, and what are our options? And you'll see it's very, very layered. There's going to be a lot of ways that we can do that. So that is where we're going. And with that, I think in the next couple of slides, you heard a lot about why we may, we moved to these new parking system, but now let's talk about how it's working and the revenue that it's generating, and it would, and kind of show the success that it's already showing to be. So I'll let Joe take that one here.
Yeah, sure. So again, fiscal year 2013 ended up with a revenues of 770,000. These revenues do also reflect the implementation issues that we experienced in early March. We did declare that parking holiday from the end of February through March, so you lost five weeks of opportunity revenues there where we were making the improvements and being responsive to the issues. We also saw reduction in collection hours due to the lighting concerns. And we, you know, because it is such a huge leap forward with technology, we wanted to have considerable soft enforcement during the beginning to allow people time to adjust and allow our visitors time to adjust to this new system. So given all those challenges, we still only, are down 4.8% revenues from the entire previous year. Our fund balance is currently at 1.4 million, very stable. And moving, there we go. Again, to show the revenue uptick, the 2012 revenues were 808,000. The 2013 revenues that were from an incomplete system were 770,000, and we are projecting an increase of a minimum of 10% once it's a full, complete system, which would result in approximately 890,000. We believe in, we do believe that 10% is a generous minimum.
Yeah, I think it's pretty conservative.
That 2013 number is annualized based on year-to-date?
Yes, based on, it was based on the June 30th, the end of June 30th fiscal year date.
And is that taken into assumption there's no change in rates, hours of enforcement or anything else?
Correct.
And that logic flows through the end of 2014 in your model?
Yes. Yep, all variables remain the same.
One of the things that's getting important to note, and I meant to, we meant to put this in the presentation, and I forgot, but depending on what kind of maintenance we're doing that year, the general cost to run the system is approximately, it can be anywhere from 400,000 to 500,000, depending on if we're servicing a lot or things or any other capital. So we were actually able to, even after the purchase of the multi-space meters, put money back into the fund balance this year, because that was our only capital project for the year. So, but we, like I said, it just generally depends on if we're doing other, you know, large maintenance projects, but anywhere from 400,000 to 500,000 dollars a year is our, our typical expense.
And those expenses include things like maintenance and repairs, also salaries?
Salaries for parking enforcement.
Every, every component of the parking program, including enforcement and preventative maintenance.
There are absolutely no general fund dollars that go into any part of the auto parking fund, in fact. So we have not only parking enforcement, but the DPW workers who maintain and do the money collection, all of that comes out of auto parking fund. It's all generated only by the actual fees for parking, and then we do have a separate designated fund balance that comes from some of the parking tickets. The $4 of every parking ticket goes into that fund to, again, for, for capital improvement. And we're going to be taking a look at that over the course of the next year as well, of making sure all that's still matching. But again, all of that is from user fees and not from the general fund.
Thank you. Through the chair, I mean, I think this is a great report. Is there a way we can put this slide deck? Because I know it'll be in the minutes in the video, but it wasn't part of the agenda. Can we put that out on the web?
Absolutely.
Because I think this answers a lot of questions.
And I believe we're going to also give this report to the next DDA board meeting as well.
Yes.
And we're also going to send out a letter to all of the downtown business owners as well, just kind of giving them an update, and also encouraging them, as they have been, to continue to contact the city manager's office for any questions or, and they've done that, and it's been great, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from them. I think, is that it?
Good.
Yes, that's.
So questions of council?
The, the reduction of the parking meter heads from the individual 942 to the 33 sort of caught my attention. What would the cost of replacing those have been? Do we have any idea what a parking meter head costs, an individual parking meter head?
I didn't ask that.
I actually don't have that figure on me, I'm not sure.
It's, it's up to $50, $100, it's easy.
And with the credit?
And with insulation, you know, bulbs, and coriant concrete, it's a substantial cost.
And would that, I mean, understand that's just sort of your seat-of-the-pants estimate based on your experience, but was that with credit card?
Oh, no.
So the credit card's on top of that? So maybe, it's well over $100?
Oh, I see, it's $100.
Yeah, the credit card ones.
Are you, I'm sorry, were you referring to the single-meter credit card option?
Single-meter credit card operating.
That's, per, per unit, it's going to be approximately about $1,000 for single-meter heads.
So 900,000, almost a million dollars to replace all those?
If you were to add in the credit card, single-meter option, yes. And that's also a lesser performing option, because it, it doesn't communicate on a network, and you're also not capturing a scale of economy for credit card processing fee. Each one is treated as an individual processing unit, so it's a credit card processing fee per unit head. And because it's a little bit smaller, too, it's also using a smaller modem, which means its performance, its connectivity performance is actually going to be reduced significantly. So you're going to see a little more what they call historic forward charges, where someone swipes their card, they pay, may not get paid, the payment's going to be delayed because the modem's going to be underperforming.
And what are our total expenditures to date on this, again? Is that 550,000?
On this, it'll be 550,000.
So we got this essentially for half the expense it would have cost to put a credit card system?
If you were to replace the equivalent with?
If we replace the entire system with single-meter heads with credit card systems?
Yeah, but from a long-term perspective, it would be even, it would be much more costly for maintenance.
And with this, we get all the, we get all the information, so we can manipulate our system, tweak it, learn from it, all those things.
Yeah, again, the ICF single-meter heads wouldn't have the, the capacity to operate on a network.
So that, that rate includes all of them having their own modem, the transaction inside, and then, of course, you still have to go to every meter to empty the change and, because it would include a change.
Still be susceptible to theft on that?
Yes.
What kind of market, if you know, is there for used ParkMobile devices?
ParkMobile devices?
Or no, not ParkMobile, the, the kiosks.
For used kiosks, I have not been made aware of any secondary markets for, like refurbished?
Yeah, or just if we wanted to sell ours, how much, any idea?
Oh, we have no idea, no idea.
No, I haven't explored that.
Okay.
And that's, hasn't been brought up.
Yeah, I can't imagine why anybody would want to do that. And then also, is, in your opinion, are we doing enough to advertise ParkMobile as an option? There used to be, you know, pretty prominent labeling on the meter heads. Now it's just a little tag beneath them. I'm a little concerned that if people don't know, it's already there.
Yeah, and the sign, part of our work with Republic Parking is also looking at our sign inventory and also seeing how we did signs during the transition. And we're going to kind of capture their best practices from their experiences, working with other municipalities such as Lansing, Ann Arbor, Lincoln, Nebraska, Davenport, Iowa. A lot of cities have rolled this out successfully, and they have their own sign plan. And we're going to kind of look at that and see maybe where we don't align with some best practices, and relook at how we advertise ParkMobile, and, as well as some actual kiosk signage on the kiosks.
Yeah, we've been, again, hesitating on the kiosk, because we want it to look like a skateboard. So we're trying to figure out what, because there is a lot of information. We know, we've also heard that a lot of people don't know that they can pay at every station, and once they know that, people get pretty excited about that. So that is one of the next things that we're going to look at, is what are the most essential sign, what's the most essential signage that we want on the kiosk, but also as well as now that, once, will be, once those lights come in this month, then we get to go back to normal enforcement, so then we can sign, go back to making sure all of our signs are exactly where they need to be and that kind of thing, too.
I think our goal is to go back and evaluate how we did the signage, and make sure that every sign and every sticker is purposeful, and that we are not contributing to a sign pollution that's going to actually take away from the educational component.
I have one suggestion and two, one question. A friend of mine heard through her network that the signs above the kiosks only have the end time of the parking and not the start time, so perhaps we could add the start time to, to that, to help inform people who are using the system, so that would be useful. And then a friend of mine, people text. And then a friend of mine, people text me, their issues with parking. So I get images of sort of the parking poles with the numbers, and one of them had a missing number. And, you know, I can't find it on my phone right now, but do we have a problem of numbers that are going missing, or?
We have had some vandalism recently, and I think we are going to reevaluate how we've implemented the, the space numbering and see if there's any way we can re-forify those. And Republic Parking has also given us some suggestions on that and how we might reevaluate how we roll that out, as well as looking at how we've assigned space numbers as well. But I believe we are working with the Department of Public Works to establish the sign inventory and find out what exactly is missing and what has been vandalized and replaced.
And parking enforcement's great about giving us that feedback as well, like, your sign is missing, or this is missing. So they, they communicate with us as well. It's really a good team approach as it relates to enforcement and DPW and then our office.
Are there any other questions I can answer for anybody?
What does it mean to be a Park Mobile top performer?
Means I received an email from our account representative notifying us of our success. No, that, that is a good question, actually, because that could mean different opportunities for branding with them, and for signage and other, other things. If they, if they see success, usually a company wants to promote that success and continue its expansion.
What's nice, too, is more and more communities around us are actually using Park Mobile, which is another selling point, because once it's on your phone, I was in Petoskey last year, and I was like, this is sweet, because I could just go, and I already had it, because I'm, I'm a big Park Mobile user. It's just, you know, it works for me.
It's in DC. I mean, it's across the country.
Exactly. So the more we were talking about that, too, I know Birmingham, just, they finished their year anniversary this year, and I think there's a couple more that I hear are coming on as well. So the more people get used to Park Mobile, again, it'll just be, people already have it on their phone, which is great.
I would imagine it's, it's going to be tied to the increase that we, we received. It was, you know, almost a 50% jump in, in their performance, and I'm sure that's a pretty solid jump as far as the ratio for them.
Well, Joe, I know you've been living and breathing this system. Your knowledge of it is evident from your presentation, and we appreciate the information tonight.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
I just wanted to provide counsel with the status report on the DPW's response to the recent basement flooding complaints that we received.
Yes, sir.
You know, at this point, the DPW has responded and cleaned, and in some cases, multiple times, a very large area beyond the, the area that we received the complaints, from Eight Mile all the way to Troy Street and the Grand Truck Railroad to Woodward. And we haven't found anything in our system that would cause the kinds of problems in the reports that, that we have received. The, also, by reviewing our records, we found that the, this, the entire area was actually camered in 2008, 2009 as part of our routine inspections. And at that time, a large section was warlined, and that's, you know, that's, that brings it into standards of a new pipe. And so, you know, essentially, these, these areas that have reported the flooding, they have new pipe in front of their homes, you know? And so, again, you know, in order to give it 100%, we are actually scheduling a crew to come in and camera these lines again this week. And they also will have some specialized equipment that will, what they refer to as a lateral launcher, which will actually view inside the private property portion of the, the sewer lead that comes into the main, which, that's above and beyond what we would normally do. But because we don't have an explanation, we want to make sure that at least all of the city's infrastructure is working to, you know, and if there's any problems that we do discover, you know, certainly we'll take care of it and report it to council.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
The final thing that I would say is that we are looking at finding a reliable rain gauge that could tell us whether or not we experienced some sort of anomaly just in the area of Ferndale that recorded an extreme amount of rain. Engineers have sent some emails out to some authorities, and we're waiting to get some of that response back. Other than that, I'm hoping we should have all of the additional work and inspections done at the end of this week and be able to have the city's engineer here, at least scheduled to come here at the next council meeting, and we should be able to probably put some closure to this.
Thank you, Lloyd. Appreciate, appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sherlyn, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. April, anything else from the manager's office?
Just a couple of things. I do want to thank Joe. He has been knee-deep in parking since day one, and he does know it front and back, and he's always checking, checking the data and going, hey, take a look at this. So it's, it's definitely on the top of his mind, and I thought it, you're going to see him doing a lot more of these parking presentations, just because he is so focused on it. I also want to thank all of the staff that was out for the Dream Cruise. I know that DPW had quite a few people over the weekend, as well as we brought in some public parking ambassadors as well to help. But it was not, it was great that, to see so many public works in our police departments and fire department and assert and auxiliary there helping. And you definitely couldn't look past too many people to not find somebody who's related to the city in somehow, and they all did a great job. And Michael's not here, but phenomenal job as well, and great weather that he ordered for that weekend. So I just want to thank the entire team of the city in Ferndale for making that event very successful, and we had no issues for that entire weekend. So just want to thank all of them for all of their help.
Great. Dan Christ, anything from the legal personnel tonight, Mayor? All right. Dan Martin?
Yep, two things. One, I want to just second April's compliment to the city and staff for the Dream Cruise. It was very, I think, well-managed, and the city had a great presence, and it was just a great weekend. So congratulations to everyone involved with that. And secondly, right before the council meeting, I want to thank Debbie Wilson, who's the executive director for the Housing Commission. Mayor Protem Piana and I had the opportunity to take a tour of Willington West right before, like I said, council today, and to take a look at their facilities, talk about in more detail than she had presented here, some of the challenges she's facing, and explore some further opportunities down the road for us to, to collaborate where we may be able to. So I look forward to continuing that conversation, but she really took a, a good amount of time with us and walked us through one of her facilities, and I think it was very beneficial, I felt, so.
Mayor Protem Piana?
Yes, I have three announcements. Bear with me. First, I wanted to thank County Commissioner Helene Zach for working with me on trying to figure out what other services we could provide and augment with the city on dealing with code enforcement and the issue of hoarding. City Council has received multiple complaints about hoarding, and hoarding is really a mental health issue. And right now, the city only provides a code enforcement response, and it's very, you need a health, a mental health response. And so I've been working with her to see what we could work with the county in order to provide our code enforcement staff with some additional resources to help the families and homeowners who are dealing with hoarding. So I just wanted to give an update to council on, on that. That's a work in progress. So nothing to report out on now, but we're, we're trying to make those connections. I also want to announce, the DDA did it in their presentation, but I wanted to give more background and council's aware of this. I am hosting, with the support of the Mayor's Business Council, the City of Ferndale and Partners, a, an additional extended public outreach engagement forum for Ferndale businesses and property owners for the Woodward Alternative Analysis. Yeah, I've been giving updates for the past year and a half on this two-year grant, and we're in the final six months of this grant, and there is one public engagement meeting left. And very few business owners and property owners have attended the first three public outreach forums because they're at night, when a lot of business owners are unavailable to, or restaurant owners are unavailable to come and attend. So with the support of the Woodward Avenue Action Association, the DDA, SEMCOG, and the Michigan Suburbs Alliance, and the Chamber have pulled together an event on September 12th from 9:00 to 11:00 at Dino's Lounge. Dean Bach has graciously offered to host this event, and so last Friday, I mailed out 400 letters to our businesses, and so they should be getting them this week. So if you bump into a business owner along Woodward or anywhere else, lots of business owners care about transit, even though they're not located on Woodward, please invite them to attend. Either they can contact me, or they can go to the city's Facebook page eventually, and they'll be able to get some information about that. That hasn't been posted yet, but that will eventually this week. So, and my final announcement is our partners, Warm Training Center, reached out to me. They are part of the regional Southeast, Southeast Michigan Regional Energy Office, and this is available up on the city's website right now, or the Facebook page, is that Ferndale has been picked as a pilot community to help out with the Michigan Solar Works Program. And you can get a low-interest loan to help put solar panels on your house to lower your energy costs. So people can sign up on the, go to the city's website, or they can go to warmtraining.org/solar. And what you do is put your information in, and they'll contact you and ask you some screening questions about your energy use, as well as what type of infrastructure you have and shading you have to deal with solar. This is very similar to the Better Buildings for Michigan program that Warm Training was heavily involved in, which was doing the home energy audit. So the process is the same. Enter your information. They'll call you and see, and do some screening questions to see if this, if you're eligible for the program. So the deadline for signing up for this program is August 31st. So if you have the interest of putting solar on your house, please go to warmtraining.org/solar. And that's it.
Excellent. Councilman Galloway?
Not too much. I just wanted to say how nice it was to see all the employees excited about the Weight Watchers program. It's been, I'm not sure I've ever seen employees that happy and, you know, that sense of morale and community. And since that, this new administration that we have under April is really bringing together folks in a very positive way. And, you know, we spent a lot of money up here in, in 12 years, and that's, seems like 9,000 of the best dollars we've ever spent, just what I saw here today. That was a great thing, seeing Luke talk about his weight loss, so that was fantastic.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of things for me. I think there's still a few days to take the park survey, right, Lloyd? When is?
Just to the end of the month.
To the end of the month, so also by the end of the month. If you haven't had an opportunity yet, go to our website, go to one of the parks, and you can scan your, your smartphones there. Come to City Hall and get a hard copy if you like, but take the park survey and let us know what you'd like to see in our parks. I want to reiterate what April said about the Dream Cruise, and Michael Larry in particular, I think, pulled off, I told him I thought it was his best one yet, and immediately he went to, well, you know, next year's going to be the 20th anniversary and the, and the anniversary of the Mustang, so I got bigger things planned. But I thought it was, I thought it was truly one of our best Dream Cruises yet, well organized, everyone behaved, and just a really, really nice event this year. And then finally, I want to recognize somebody. You know, last week, we actually, in the consent agenda, accepted a, a retirement agreement with Jane Marie, and you mentioned earlier that Jane Marie, after how many years of service?
Almost 25.
Almost 25 years of service left. You know, in typical Jane Marie style, she, you know, she's low-key, she didn't want a party, she didn't want proclamations, she didn't want all of that stuff. But I just wanted to publicly thank her for her almost 25 years of service. She, she's worn many hats over the years in her dedication to Ferndale, and she will be missed. So thank you, Jane Marie, for a great career in Ferndale. And with that, our meeting is not adjourned because we need to go into closed session if there's a motion to do so.
I would move that we go into closed session for purposes of the city manager's performance evaluation.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin, supported by Piana, to go into closed session for the purposes of a performance evaluation. Ms. Clerk, would you call the roll?